I want to call to order the council meeting of June 14, 2016. Please call to roll.
Mr. Barack?
Here.
Ed Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kamine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolf?
Here.
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Chief Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here. Okay, and on this Flag Day, I would ask everyone to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting. The minutes were included in your package. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. We will now move on to the finance report for the month of April.
The finance report for the village's finances for the month of April will focus primarily on the general fund. And on the revenue side, the earnings tax collections for the month of April totaled $843,000. This is up about 20 percent from April of 2015's collection of about $702,000. So the total amount that's been received so far year-to-date is lower over $2 million. The earnings tax collection budget for 2016 was $2.6 million. So collections have been tracking ahead of previous years since January. Part of this can be attributed to timing, since collection in 2015 fell short of the budget. The earnings tax continues to be the village's primary revenue source. The property tax that was received during the month of April was $665,000. That was an advance that we requested of the county auditor. This was primarily for the levy funds. We have not received our allocation from the county for our property taxes. This is the levy funds that was received under property tax. For the local government fund, the village did receive payment in the amount of lower than $4,000 for the month of April. So that brings our total revenue for the month of April at $323,398. The total amount collected year-to-date is $2.3 million, which is about 51 percent of what we had estimated to be collected. The expenses for the month of April totaled $448,000, and that gave us showing about 34 percent of the budget has been spent as of the end of April. The unencumbered general fund balance at the end of April was $4.4 million. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions to demand? If not, we'll move on to the next item. And this evening, we are going to recognize Wayne Signer. Just one quick word, and then I'll ask Wayne to come up. Wayne has served on the environmental stewardship, or not the environmental stewardship, the Stormwater Advisory Committee since the beginning of the Stormwater Advisory. And when the Stormwater Advisory was set up like about 12 years ago, there was a long list of items to work through. And I think Wayne has the representative, both as a resident and a, under our charter, one of the members of the Stormwater Advisory Committee has to also be one of the resident businesses. And Wayne took on the role of not only a business owner, but also a resident, and really was instrumental in getting a real good business approach to the Stormwater Advisory Committee. And we were able to work through this long list of projects over these years. And as a result, last year, we were able to reduce the stormwater fee to our residents by 30 percent because of the effectiveness that the committee had worked through the items. And Wayne has been very instrumental during this entire process, and he would now like to step away from the committee, having served that role. And I think, I just want to thank Wayne tonight, and I would now like to invite him to come forward.
Okay. I'll read this flag. "In recognition of 13 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Amberly Village. Having served as a member of the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee from 2003 to 2016, presented to Wayne Signer by the Council of Amberly Village and stated May 9, 2016." I know it's not May 9, but that's where we get it. And I really do thank you for all your work and your dedication.
Okay, we'll now move on to, we have eight citizens, or citizens and our state representative to speak this evening on the gas pipeline issue. For those that are unfamiliar with the process, when you're asked to come forward, all you do is come up to the mic, state your name and your address, and then you have three minutes. And I really, first of all, want to thank all the people who are on the agenda for tonight. This is obviously an item that is, a lot of people are very interested in and have a lot of passion around, and I think that is very important. There's already, I think, well over 300 letters to the siting board, and that's citizens speaking, and that's what's critical in this entire process. So I first would like to invite Mary Rinsky to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mary Rinsky, 8340 Spring Valley Drive. Since the route has changed with the revision of Duke's pipeline, I am no longer, my home is no longer 35 feet from where the pipeline was supposed to be. They kept telling me maybe it won't be 35 feet, but, so I'm happy about that, I'm relieved, but I'm continuing to fight in every way possible because I think this is bad for our community. I want to encourage council to assume intervention status. I think that's really important, that we get our concerns, that we be a player in this, that we be at the table. I would encourage you to emphasize the police and fire department vulnerability, and I want you to know that I'm available. If there's some job that I can do, I will help you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I mean, I know that council members will have a lot of comments. We have a resolution later on, so I think as far as the residents speaking, if we can limit it to specifically questions, and then we'll come back to comments later. Bill Doring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Bill Doring, 2600 Rollerbrook Drive. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the First Suburbs Consortium of Southwest Ohio. Had to remember the full detail. First Suburbs is the first suburbs that surround Cincinnati and Ohio. There's another charter in Cleveland for that area. There's not very active in southeast Ohio, and the Toledo area is mediocre as far as activity. Columbus is part of the statewide group, but because Columbus absorbed the most of its suburbs 40 years ago, they're not as strong as we are here in southwest and northeast Ohio. But we had our executive board meeting that I am a member of yesterday, and we are coming forward with the feasibility of looking at, could we be a conduit for Suburbs for the intervention program that's been mentioned earlier? Now, I just learned in the previous meeting from Ms. Kamine that the city of Cincinnati and/or may be able to, Canada may also get into this, but we don't know yet at this point. So the only reason I'm here, I'm saying that First Suburbs is looking at being that conduit. We are officially taking no position on the issue. You know, we're just going to be that conduit. Obviously, this is a way to share the cost. We don't know yet what the costs are going to be. We just heard a while ago that it's how much do you want to spend? So we don't know things there, but I think the next few weeks, we will see a lot more out there. And if you need me to come back, or somebody else from First Suburbs, we'd be willing to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next, Nancy Berto. And if I mispronounce names-
Perfect. Nancy Berto.
I apologize.
Yes. 3160 Legacy Trace. I'm a professor of economics and sustainability at Xavier University, and I direct a business program and an economics program that's oriented around sustainability. I don't know, you know, a lot of technical details about the pipeline, but I know enough to say no. And what I would like to do is just speak to it from a hard-nosed economic perspective, okay? From my own viewpoint as a homeowner, this is a complete negative to my property value and to my identity in the community, moving to the community level. I move to a clean, green, forward-looking community, and this pipeline is the opposite of all of that. It's a very backward-looking strategy. So looking at it from Duke's perspective, I would never buy any stock in Duke right now, because natural gas, all of the experts will tell you, this is a bubble. It's a bubble. It is a very temporary Band-Aid on a national and a global energy transition. It is not the future. And to put this kind of investment into something that is a temporary Band-Aid is actually really stupid. We have a condo in Florida, and Florida Power and Light is part of Next Era Energy. All of their new investments are in wind and solar, okay? So I think from a corporate standpoint, it's very foolish. I think from a national energy standpoint, that is, really falls right in line with what makes sense for business. So I think this is really a very bad way for us to put up with a lot of negative impact on the community, whether it's noise, traffic, and then in the context of the overall fossil fuel pollution and externalities, it's just a no-brainer that we should absolutely go for that intervention status, that I understand will give us a voice at the table. And if there's anything I can do to help you connect you with an economic perspective on any of this, to try to estimate the negative economic impact of some of these, of the pipeline, I'd be happy to try to connect you up with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Khalil Skarik.
Thank you. Khalil Skarik, I'm at 3160 Legacy Trace. Thank you for providing this opportunity for the citizens to speak. It is critical. Adjacent to my home, including my home, are three homes that have geothermal. The homes were both sited so the sun could reach their roofs at angles so that they could maximize passive energy. I could go on with the list, but to keep my comments brief, people are very energy-conscious here. We just put out on next-door neighbor, called for those that were interested in solar energy within, to get a possible group bid for home installations. Immediately came back at least five or six people with serious interest in trying to get a group bid going in order to lower installation costs. I wish to sensitize you to the fact that this community lives by its standard. We are green. We are trees. We are beautiful. We are proud southwest Ohio Americans, trying to make this community better. And we are putting our dollars to do that. So as you make your decision, as you support us in our quest to make this community as beautiful as it can be, we must say no to this pipeline. It is inconsistent with the actions. Although small and number that I report to you, they are real. They are meaningful. It is what we, the people, are doing. Finally, my closing comment is, this is inconsistent, in my opinion, for the siting board to really take this on, because if you read the charge of the siting board, it requests that they act with energy policy that is positive for Ohio. As the previous speaker noted, and as I am noting to you, this is not a positive action. This is a short-term, fast-buck gain solution that will not build a long-term future for the citizens of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jennifer Branch. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Branch. I live at 8455 Crestdale Court. And I, my husband and I spent a year and a half looking, Hyrick, looking for the right house to move in in the right community. And after a year and a half, we found this house, perfect house on Crestdale Court, and then we waited another nine months because it was a short sale. And we were very patient to move in here because Amberly had everything we wanted. And the day we got our keys and walked over, we remarked how quiet, how beautiful, how green, how many birds we could hear. It's just a perfect, peaceful community. The second this pipeline was announced, I bet you, people looking to move are staring away from Amberly, because you can see the line go right through Amberly Village. The time to put in the pipeline, for the pipeline to be established, once it's established during that time, knowing that there's a risk that there could be a safety hazard, a fire, an explosion within a half a mile radius of the entire pipeline, makes Amberly no longer attractive. When we moved in, there was a levy just passed by the community to help the police, keep the police during the time that you were losing money from the state government. That was a good thing. We saw that as, this is a good community that cares about each other and cares about keeping the community together. I'm here also as a lawyer. I'm a litigator, and I think problems like this get solved through litigation. And it's nice that 300 people sent letters protesting, but it means nothing. What matters is intervening in the filing with the PUCO, litigating that case, joining with all your communities. When I was a legal aid lawyer many years ago, represented low-income families at the PUCO. And what I saw happen was CG&E was, had lots of power. Every person in the PUCO understood what CG&E wanted, to raise $200 million in our bills because of the Zimmer Power Plant. I represented low-income people, had no power. But when we all combined, all the cities, all the commercial, all the utility, people that paid bills and argued that, no, the ratepayers should pay some of it, but so should the shareholders. It's the only way you're going to get your voice heard, is when you combine resources with everyone else. I would urge you today, when you pass or discuss your resolution about opposing it, that you also ask for a resolution intervening. It's not going to cost you anything to intervene in the case. Once you intervene and you have a voice at the table, then you can decide your litigation strategy. Do we need an expert? Do we need to file a report? Do we need to hire a lawyer or pay for part of the lawyer's fees? So I would urge you to do more than just oppose it today and actually intervene. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Greg Robinson.
Thank you. I'm Greg Robinson. My wife, Ann, and I reside at 6625 Hudson Parkway. Mayor, council appreciate the opportunity. I also support filing the intervention process through the Ohio Power Siting Board. I'm an architect. I've been at the University of Cincinnati for 25 years, working in planning, design, and construction. And I will focus my comments this evening on those three elements. I am not here as a UC representative, although some of you may have heard that UC, with their blue ash campus, has formally gone on record opposing the pipeline. From a planning perspective, let me throw out an analogy. Think about a fireworks factory near a fire station. Not a good thing. And in some respects, we have an explosive, not necessarily a device, but a potentially explosive system, close to your facilities right here in this building. So that affects dispatching, potentially. It potentially affects response time during construction. And oh, by the way, right over in French Park, we have Hamilton County and one of four 911 towers. So significant issues from a planning perspective. Let me talk a little bit about design and construction and how that relates to safety. Safety is about management and mitigation of risk. So as we start to assess risk, Duke will tell you that there's very little risk with this pipeline. As you start to break it down into its components, you look at the manufacturer of the pipe, fairly simple, pretty good quality control, probably not a lot of risk. As you look at the design of it from an engineer's perspective, engineers base their information on historical data, on testing that's been done, et cetera. That's in a perfect world. Once this pipe goes into the ground, contractor's working on it, things may get a little bit off. This pipe, 12-plus miles of it, it will move. And the flip side of that is, at 720 PSI in this pipe, that is so much pressure that that pipe also needs to be constrained, challenging engineering issues. And then we look at, once we get through the construction and into use, you know, we've all heard the issue about a backhoe that may disrupt this pipeline. Frankly, a backhoe, if it just bumps it, probably not going to move a 30-inch line. But what it may do is, it may, pardon me, disrupt the protective coating on that pipeline. Corrosive elements of our alkaline soil will attack it. There are any number of opportunities for risk and failure. Any one of those, not a big deal perhaps. Failures often occur when risks are additive. So anyway, bottom line, opposing the pipeline and encourage intervention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Colin Driscoll.
My name's Colin Driscoll. I've been in Amberly for 29 years, live at 6600 Ridge Road. My purpose in addressing council is to ask them to consider taking the legal step of filing an intervention with the Ohio Power Siting Board on the Duke Central Corridor Extension Project. This pipeline could come straight through the heart of the village along Ridge Road. Duke has proposed three routes, with two of the three directly impacting village residents. The second route, running along the old Gibson property. There are many unanswered questions surrounding this proposed 30-inch high-pressure natural gas pipeline, which could come near our homes, places of worship, village hall, as well as our only police, fire, and emergency response facilities. Duke is proposing a highly unusual, if not unprecedented, experiment by running a very large high-pressure gas transmission line through densely populated areas. We're being told that the energy that passing through our village, through this pipeline, could be enough to heat for 2 million homes daily. The gas service lines which come into our home now typically less than one pound per square inch. A basketball is about eight pounds per square inch. So the design pressure of this pipeline is about 90 times that of a basketball. The Blue Ash Group, NOPE, met last week and mentioned several recent explosions of natural gas transmission pipelines with similar design characteristics. One in San Bruno, California in 2010, where several people lost their lives, scores of homes were flattened, and Pacific Gas and Electric was fined $1.6 billion. This happened in a highly populated area which had built up around the pipeline after the pipeline was put in place. Also mentioned was a recent explosion in Pennsylvania at the end of April, just over a month ago. You might say these are, were very old pipelines that fell into disrepair, but the second pipeline was just put in service a couple of years ago. Even some of our elected officials at the county level, like County Commissioner Todd Portune, have been earnestly seeking answers from Duke. Portune mentioned he only recently found out about this pipeline through concerned constituents, as opposed to any kind of heads-up from Duke. Mr. Portune voiced his continued opposition to this pipeline just last week at a golf manor meeting. In closing, I urge council to oppose the pipeline, communicate this opposition to residents. We should provide them with information through a pipeline-specific, community-wide mailing, as well as utilizing the phone system. We should lead on this issue by placing yard signs on all village-owned property. If for some reason the signs that NOPE created aren't acceptable to us, let's create our own. I'm done.
Thank you. Any questions? And finally, we'll move on to State Representative Denise Trias.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm in good company tonight, and it's good to see everybody on council. So this was brought to my attention by some of you sitting here today, and I appreciate you reaching out to my office so that we could work in partnership to try to figure out what is exactly going on here. So I do want to relay a little bit of information. Originally, as you know, Duke notified certain property owners that there was, the pipeline was going to be laid, you know, folks that were directly impacted by that, but didn't reach out to anybody really in any kind of Broadway and skipped elected officials. You guys are here to represent the community, and you were not made aware of this through those letters. So I approached Duke and said, hey, you know, you need to have a broader meeting about this, because there, what has happened is there's so much concern because there's a lack of information. I think maybe the more information, the concern will remain, by the way, but at least they can give ample information, ample opportunity for the communities to participate at large, instead of just very specific folks in each community. And so they're having this meeting tomorrow night. I applaud them for doing that. Unfortunately, it's an open house, so the forum doesn't really allow for a direct question-and-answer session, which I think we were anticipating, but still an opportunity to go and get some questions answered. Secondly, as you know, many communities are impacted by these three different routes, and I applaud you for organizing in the way that you have, which is not to say, you know, and the first speaker here today said, while it's not directly in her backyard right now, she's still really concerned about this because it impacts other people in this community, and you are standing in solidarity, not only with folks in Amberly, but with the other communities that are impacted by the pipeline, which are many. So I do want to applaud that approach, because I think it's important. So I have written a letter, as many of you know, to the siting board. So, you know, this is a process, and so as we move through the process, you have your voice in the process. As you know, the siting board will only get two of the options of the three that have been presented, and then they will continue to have community meetings. However, I will pose to you that, I have talked to some of the representatives from Duke, and it is possible that the siting board may say, we would prefer not one, two, or three, but how about 3A? Or how about four? Which could be an option that would avoid densely populated parts of this community to do the business that they want to do, but not impact these dense urban villages like Amberly, and take the risk away from, you know, the folks that are immediately impacted as property owners. So it's a process. I stand at the ready to help you in any way I can. I will carry this resolution that you passed tonight to the siting board. You will send it. If you send it to me, I'm happy to send it on your behalf additionally, as your state rep. And I've started to reach out, well, I've been reaching out to the other communities. So again, I applaud your efforts, stand at the ready to help, and do think that this is not in vain. I want to emphasize that. What you are doing is, I'm quite sure will have an impact. So let me know if I can be of further help. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank everyone. Thank you, and thank everyone for their comments this evening, and throughout the process. We continue to hear a lot of voices, and that's important. Next, we'll move on to committee reports, and first, the Finance Committee.
Mr. Chair, actually, is there any, could we advance this item by any chance so that, you know, folks need to leave, that maybe we should take, can we take this up? Is that possible?
Sure. So why don't we move to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee?
Okay. What page is this on? Got it. Okay. The Health, Education, and Welfare Committee met recently to recommend that council pass an ordinance stating officially, the village is opposition to the proposed Duke Central Pipeline Corridor. Council heard from several of our residents earlier this evening, just now, in fact, and to date, over 350 letters and emails in opposition to the pipeline have been filed with the Ohio Power Siting Board, from residents along the corridor, from elected officials, from our state representative, from the dean and president of UC Blue Ash. Many, many letters. Our mayor, in fact, and many individuals on this council have filed letters. Two of the proposed routes of the pipeline would traverse Ridge Road, which is Amberly's main artery, essentially bisecting the village, decimating trees, impeding traffic, and potentially affecting the response time of our public safety services by blocking access to Village Hall, and additionally, by blocking evacuation routes in the event of a catastrophic failure of the pipeline. So I am here to ask, to make, I'm moving that council pass Resolution Number 2016-24, which is a resolution objecting to Duke Energy's planned central corridor gas pipeline project.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-24, objecting to Duke Energy's planned central corridor gas pipeline expansion project. Are there any questions or comments?
Just, excuse me, just one comment. I would ask that the chair of the committee read the resolution.
Much easier, thank you. Okay, this is Resolution Objecting to Duke Energy's Planned Central Corridor Gas Pipeline Expansion Project. Whereas Duke Energy has proposed three routes for a 30-inch high-pressure natural gas pipeline, and two of these routes involve property in Amberly Village. And whereas Amberly Village has always tried to be very considerate of the environment, both within Amberly and surrounding communities, and has been a Tree City USA community for 12 years, the proposed routes will be very devastating to the environment with the removal of many mature trees. This is especially concerning, given the impact to our tree canopy over the past few years from issues like the Emerald Ash Borer. Whereas one of the proposed routes goes along Ridge Road for more than one mile, and Ridge Road is a heavily traveled road and the main artery of Amberly Village, and also the location of the village's police and fire units. Ridge Road is also the main road that emergency vehicles use to traverse the village, and any construction along this road would require a partial or complete closure for substantial time. Whereas Amberly Village has many creeks and steep hillsides, including along Ridge Road, construction along any route in the village would be very harmful to the environment and could destabilize hillsides along roads due to the wide right-of-way required for this pipeline. Whereas the proposed pipeline is a large diameter and high-pressure pipeline, and such pipelines situated in a high-consequence area, such as Amberly Village, create an increased risk to the safety of people, schools, hospitals, and property. Although disasters from such pipelines are rare, if they do occur in high-consequence areas, then the result will be devastating to property and lives. Whereas the proposed pipeline will have significant impact on property values along its route, and would also result in difficulty selling properties along or close to its route. Whereas Ridge Road is a major access road for Amberly and surrounding communities to major highways in the area, including I-75, I-71, and Ronald Reagan Highway, and any disruption on this road due to construction of the pipeline, maintenance of the pipeline, or catastrophic failure of the pipeline would have a significant impact on access to the highways. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Amberly Village, however many members elected, that the village objects to Duke Energy's planned pipeline project and demands that the company develop alternative and reduce-risk routes for this project if the project is indeed required. Routes through more rural and low-consequence areas are available, and while it is recognized that these may involve more costs, such costs would be appropriate, given all of the downsides, including safety and environmental impact from the current proposed route.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt that resolution. Other questions or comments?
I just want to add my thanks to all the residents. We have very articulate and well-spoken and thoughtful people in our village, and I am very grateful to hear your views.
I want to make all the residents aware that we have, we had, held a law committee meeting earlier, and in case you all leave. We have talked in that committee about the prospect of intervening, but that will most likely be done separately unless someone moves to amend this motion. But not that we haven't, we're not actively considering it.
I actually have a question about process. Do we, could we vote, could we move to adopt, could we move toward intervention without altering this resolution? Does it have to be part of this resolution? Can it be its own, it certainly could be its own motion, just in the floor, right?
Yeah, it definitely could be its own motion. We do have time to make the decision, and I think, you know, that's something we can discuss. But what's proposed at this point is Resolution 2016-24. So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-24. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously. Now, is there any other questions or comments with respect to the process, as far as intervention or anything else?
I would just suggest, you know, as Councilwoman Wolf just mentioned, we just got out of a law committee meeting, and I believe we'll likely have another one in the next few weeks where the solicitor will have additional information, plus we'll have additional information from surrounding communities. So I don't know if there's urgency to pass another, to initiate another resolution now. I think in all likelihood, I would think we will, but I would suggest we just wait till we get additional information in terms of, you know, what the possibilities are.
Tom, if I can just, I'll just mention about the timing a little bit. Duke has not actually filed its application yet. It filed what they call a pre-application, so the time hasn't even started yet. I was, we were initially told, or it's been on the internet, whatever, that they were going to file on June 23rd. I understand that may be pushed back a month or so, but we don't know yet. But even if it is June 23rd, the Power Siting Board has 60 days to look at it, determine whether the application's complete, and then the village has 30 days to intervene. So we're looking at possibly up to four more months, maybe as short as two more months, likely somewhere in between, before the village even has to intervene. So we've got some time to look at it further and make a decision. I mean, there's time.
Okay, other questions? Avi, go ahead.
Just wanted to thank everybody again for coming out and for all these comments. It's really wonderful. We have, as Peg said, a very articulate group. I encourage people who are watching at home, I know everybody in the room has probably written their letters already, but to continue, even though we're moving toward this intervention strategy, I think that is certainly, certainly more action is better, there's a long road ahead, and there's a lot more action, but continue to make your voices heard and write those letters to the Siting Board. I think that's, that's great. I also agree with, while the text of the resolution does focus a lot on the village, and I think certainly that's our goal here today, I think we've, we've all, it's a very good strategy, as the state representative mentioned, that we're really opposing this project for all the reasons that you all mentioned on all three lines, even if they don't select one of the two Amberly lines, continuing to, you know, to make our voices heard on that. We could be, that line goes through the Kenwood Town Center, through the Jewish Hospital, we could, we all use those two. So all the safety risks involved, you know, are still there, even if they're not in our, in our backyard. I did want to mention one other slightly unorthodox thing, but the city of Cincinnati is going to pass a resolution, a similar resolution tomorrow, and a couple of other things. I was told Evendale is passing one tonight. The city of Cincinnati, there is going to be a press conference, actually, at City Hall at 1:00 tomorrow, so for those of you who are, really want to be on the news, standing in opposition to this and have Duke see your face on camera, if you're interested, steps of City Hall tomorrow, 1:00 PM.
Thank you for that. And obviously, this is an item of great importance to residents, great importance to Amberly, great importance to this council. It is going to be something that our committees will be meeting about, council will be meeting about. And for those residents, again, I thank you for your input tonight, and if you are not currently registered to receive notices of meetings, please register for those notices on our website, because you will then receive notices of our committee meetings or council meetings or whatever, to discuss this and other things. So again, thank you very much. We will now move on to the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on my agenda is to introduce the Resolution Number 2016-22, approving the tax budget for 2017. This is a procedural matter where we have to request or to present a budget for, to support, that we have a need for monies for the, for future fiscal year. The proposed budget includes $4.5 million in total budget, general funds budget, and $3.6 million in non-general funds. The next item on the agenda is to bring this forward to a public hearing.
Okay. So again, the process for the tax budget is that this is something we do annually. Our main budgeting process for the village is something we do in October and November. But this, as Councilman Hapik explained, this is a procedural thing that we are required to do. As part of that process, we also hold a public hearing. So I hereby open the public hearing at 7:15 this evening, and if there's any resident who would like to testify at this public hearing, you're welcome to come forward to the podium at this time. Okay? There's not appear that there's any resident that wants to talk on this particular item at this point, so I will close the public hearing at 7:60. Thank you.
Okay. Resolution 2016-22 is Resolute Approving the Budget of Estimated Available Funds and Estimated Required Expenditures for the General and Non-General Funds for the County Year 2017, and Authorizing the Village Manager to Submit the Tentative Budget to the County Auditor with Recommendation for Continuation of the Present Tax Levy. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-22, which would basically approve our tax budget for 2017. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-22. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
Couple items which were addressed at the last Finance Committee meeting. The committee looked at the possibility of putting the police tax renewal levy on the primary ballot scheduled for May the 2nd of 2017. Specific details and rates will be discussed at future Finance Committee meetings, so this is all I can report on that matter. The other item is that we were presented with the, a new way of providing financial information to the village residents regarding current financings. It's called Open Gov and Open Checkbook. This will be presented in more detail at a future meeting. That concludes my report.
One thing I want to, just with respect to the police levy, just, you know, we're really just starting the process, and what the Finance Committee basically did was kind of set out the timetable for us to do it. The one thing that this council is very committed to is, we always have to demonstrate that we, number one, are good stewards with all the money that our residents give. And so that is something, you know, that's why we held the meeting on June 2nd. That's why, you know, we will do things over the next nine months or whatever, to demonstrate that we are good stewards. And then the other critical thing that we have to demonstrate at all times is that there's a need. And so those are the things that Finance Committee and council will be focused on, is that we are, we need to demonstrate that we're good stewards and that there is a need. So that's really the process that we will be underway over the next few months, to understand what is that need, and then be able to communicate that to our residents. Other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the Streets and Public Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. On June, on June 2nd, the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met, and we discussed the replacement of a, of a storm pipe, and that's the, and that's the subject of Resolution 2016-23. Due to sinkholes and erosion of the right-of-way, village staff began planning the replacement of a deteriorated corrugated pipe and headwall at the intersection of Section Road and Farm Acres Drive. This occurred in 2014. The project was originally part of the 2015 Stormwater Program. However, in that, during that time, the replacement of this pipe, the bids, the bidding that went out, the village received two bids, and both were rejected, due to inconsistency in the bids, and lack of experience in similar projects by the lowest bidder. And so we basically deferred the work on this particular project to this year. The bid request went out again, and we received, and we received two bids from Smith Construction and Advanced Contractors and Estimators. CT Consultants, which is our engineering consultants, reviewed the bids, felt each of the contractors could do the work, and recommended that the lowest, the lower bidder, Smith Construction, be awarded that project. Specifically, the project involves the following at Section Farm Acres Drive. Open cutting of the street, replacement of the existing deteriorated 15-inch corrugated stormwater pipe with approximately 70 feet of smooth-bore plastic pipe, installation of a drop manhole structure on the north side of Section Road to meet the elevation of the ravine, removal of the existing headwall, installation of a new headwall, and approximately 10 feet of rock to prevent erosion and to protect the footer of the new headwall. Staff, as I mentioned, staff and village engineers presented the project to several contractors and received bids from Smith Construction for $27,700, and received a bid from Advanced Contractors and Estimeters for $31,894. Now, it's interesting that CT had estimated that the project could cost $60,000, so almost double the bids that were received. Nonetheless, CT felt that each of these contractors could execute the work. Now, in parallel to that, in November, the Hamilton County Stormwater District announced that the application period for the 2015 Capital Improvement Program would be early November through December 4th, 2015. The staff submitted two stormwater, two stormwater pipe replacement projects to the water district for funding, one for Galbraith Road and one at the Section Road and Farm Acres Drive project that's, that we're recommending we proceed with. The two projects totaled $110,000. The village was not successful in receiving funds for the Galbraith Road project, but was successful in receiving $60,000 in funding for the Section Road and Farm Acres Drive project. Remember, that was the estimate of what we anticipated the project would cost. Now, as I mentioned, the lowest and best quote for the Section Farm Acres project was submitted by Smith Construction for $27,700. This project will- will be funded by the Hamilton County Stormwater District's Capital Improvement Program, so there'll be no cost to the village. Now, also, part of this process is that any excess monies must be returned to Hamilton County, so we can't retain any of that money for other types of projects. So I would, frankly, I would like to commend Mr. Brown, Wes Brown, and his staff for obtaining the grant. As you know, this is just another example of how our village staff meets the needs of the, meets the needs of the village in a most cost-effective way. So with this, I have a motion to approve the Stormwater Infrastructure Repair Project for Section Road and Farm Acres Drive. This is Resolution 2016-23.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-23, authorizing the village manager to move forward with the contract with Smith Construction. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-23. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And I assume that concludes the Streets Public Utilities. We will now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the second reading of Resolution 2016-10, Ordinance Regulating Model Aircraft on Public Property, or AKA drones. We read this for the first time last month. It came about through a request to the committee to look at this issue due to some complaints. And the committee met and agreed on a resolution, or an ordinance to ban the use of these aircraft at public properties in the village. It says, "No person without privilege to do so shall operate model aircraft on or over village property." The term "model aircraft" means any unmanned object that is powered, such as with a battery, stored energy, an engine or propellants, capable of sustained flight and operated from a remote source. Examples of model aircraft include radio-controlled planes or helicopters, model planes, drones, or hobby or recreational aircraft. The provision is, the fine is no more than $100. The first offense will be a minor misdemeanor, and subsequent could be a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. So that's kind of the provisions, and now we'll have a public comment period.
We are allowing public comments on this because at our last meeting, there was some interest in, in comment, and so we said we would take comments. So you did, if there is anyone at the meeting this evening, you don't have to have registered, but if you would like to make any comments on this, you're more than welcome to. Seeing that there's no one that wants to make comment, we will turn the floor back to you.
All right. Well, I would like to move that we waive the third reading of this ordinance and go ahead and vote on it this evening. So do we, is that a separate motion? I, I move to waive the third reading of Ordinance 2016-10, Regulating Model Aircraft on Public Property.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the third reading of Ordinance 2016-10. Are there any questions or comments with respect to this motion?
The motion to, just to wait.
This is the motion to waive the third reading. Okay? If there's no questions or comments, please call the roll.
Richard Barnock?
Yes.
Peggy Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hatton Back?
Yes.
Aliyah Kaye Line?
Yes.
Tom Muthin?
Yes.
Mary Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. So I move that we adopt Ordinance 2016-10, Regulating Model Aircraft on Public Property.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2016-10, Regulating Model Aircraft, in the language that Councilwoman Conway, Councilwoman Conway read.
Can't you just say council member, or Mrs. Conway, or Peg?
Sorry. Kevin, you?
I just want to note that I got a comment from the Police Department that in the penalty section, they wanted to change it from $100 to $150 to make it consistent with the other minor misdemeanors in the village.
So do we need to move to amend the ordinance? All right, now. I move that we amend the penalty section, that's Section 2, Subsection A of the ordinance, to, from $100 fine, not more than $100 to not more than $150 for each offense.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we amend Ordinance 2016-10, whereby the penalty would be increased from $100 to $150. Are there any questions or comments on that amendment? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we amend Ordinance 2016-10. Please call the roll.
The amendment of the penalty.
Just not the whole.
Correct.
Richard Barnock?
Yes.
Peggy Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hatton Back?
Yes.
Aliyah Kaye Line?
Yes.
Tom Muthin?
Yes.
Mary Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. So now, do I need to remove, I need to move that we adopt the amended Ordinance 2016-10, Regulating Model Aircraft on Public Property.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt the amended Ordinance 2016-10. Are there any questions or comments?
So I have two questions. First, just want to take a step back for how this came and, and ask probably our village manager. How, how we, it seems like this came about because of a specific complaint around the green, and then potentially also was, you know, we, and unfortunately, and I'm sorry, I was not at the committee meeting where this was discussed, in the public, in the Public Buildings Committee. But occasionally, there are things where, you know, regulations at the green might be different than regulations at, you know, down here, at the parks down here. And, and trying to figure out, kind of generally, how we use stuff like this as an ordinance versus kind of a set of rules for parks. So things like dogs are allowed because they're allowed, you know, by code, but they're not allowed down here because of a layer of regulation that may or may not be an ordinance, or hours for public property or something like that. Just trying to kind of assess whether, if this was intended to really, it, it's drafted very broadly. That's the, it's, it's very, very broad. So I'm just trying to understand if we, if we were trying to capture something that was specific to these, the uses of our public spaces, if, if this is the best practices way for us to do this, by using ordinances to have a bunch of different things in our code that prohibit different things in different places, as opposed to looking at like, the public space at the green or the public space at the Village Hall. Does that question make sense? I'll have another question after that.
Yeah, let me, let me respond to how it came to be, and I may have to defer to Kevin as to the best way for us to address the issue. But this particular issue came to light through staff, as at least one resident that I'm familiar with complained about, as the individual used Amberly Green, was, was feeling threatened by the drones that were at Amberly Green. That's the, that's the complaint I'm aware of that stemmed from a resident, and it came up through the staff level. I believe at the same time, council received some type of complaints about drone usage at Amberly Green as well. And then there became some information that was shared on Nextdoor, encouraging people to use drones on all public property, especially this facility, because we had no regulations in regards to drones. And I believe that also was a factor here, even though that was inaccurate to encourage people to use drones on our, on our property. So quickly, the chief responded that, because this is a 911 center, it is a safety center, that it is inappropriate to have drones flying in this area. That's one of the reasons that prompted the committee to gather and have the discussion. From our perspective, we looked only at the public aspect. We did not look at any kind of private use of drones. There were, the, the chief had made us aware that the FAA was interested in preparing some type of regulations that would affect drone usage on, in their airspace, in the airspace outside of public properties. And so we were, we were, it was recommended to us to not to try to regulate that private airspace. At the same time, we did research from other communities to find out what other communities were doing. And we did determine that there were a couple of communities that had put regulations in place that prohibited drone usage. And then there were some communities that were going to allow drone usage because they had the facilities for that to, for that to actually be a, an amenity to, to their community. So with the com, you know, combination of all those factors, we, we took that to the, to the committee, and that's when the committee embarked on primarily focusing on the public regulation of drone, drone usage.
And does "public" mean, it says, "on or over village property," is that, does that include like, streets and right-of-ways and stuff like that also, the way it's drafted? Or does that include really just, I mean, are we, that, that helps. I mean, I'm trying to understand if we're trying to get at, at the green, but also just from a broader process perspective. And I'm not supporting drones. I think, in the long run, it's probably good opportu, there are probably opportunities for us to review what we allow and don't allow on all of our public property for, for good reasons, instead of doing a piecemeal. But for the purposes of this, is it, is it include like, you know, if I'm five years old and I'm flying a toy helicopter in my front yard and it flies over the street, am I technically in violation of this? Do you, is that how you, on a street that is a public street?
Technically, probably yes. But I think if you have an officer go out there and say, "Hey, are you, did it just go over the road once?" You know, I don't think it's going to be a citation or anything. It was geared towards Amberly Green and Village Hall property.
So one more question, I'm sorry. Also on the "without privilege to do so" language also. So I, I don't anticipate this, but, you know, I like to come up with all the scenarios. So if we had a scenario where we were approached to say like, you know, "Let's have a drone-flying contest or something on our public property," and we wanted to allow that, would we technically have to do a notwithstanding ordinance in order to allow that on our own property? Or is this drafted to allow administrative sort of, you know, like, privilege, that privilege language would allow that?
You're probably right. As it's drafted, we would probably have to do an ordinance to allow a different use like that. If you wanted, say, the city, excuse me, the village manager to be able to approve uses of the green or something, we would probably have to write that in there. The language "without privilege to do so" was borrowed from FAA regulations. It's kind of a vague language, but as it's used in the existing regulations, you know, for example, a, a, a regular licensed helicopter would have the ability to fly over Amberly Green. I mean, they have a privilege or license to do that. So that, that's all it means, is there's some other governmental approval or license or something for someone to do it. It's borrowed language. But if you want the village manager or someone to be able to administratively approve something, we should probably just make that specific in the ordinance.
Should we just get down?
Okay. Just a, a couple of questions. If, if I'm a, if I fly a drone on my property, for example, there've been commercial operators that have used drones to estimate my roof damage and things like that, and so they use drones, and I think they went throughout the village. So if someone uses, if I, if I were to use a drone on my property, it would not be in violation, right?
Correct.
If I were to use a drone and I accidentally harmed someone that was not on my property, I would probably be, I could be sued for, you know, for damages or whatever, just like if I, if my tree fell on someone else's property.
Right.
And similarly, if I were on the green, and if I had a drone, and that drone hit someone, that person could, you know, without, without an ordinance, that person could sue me or whatever, you know, take me to court for damages. So I guess I'm just wondering the need, the need for an ordinance to cover the green, if, if there were, if someone incurred damages today, they could get, receive compensation. So I don't necessarily get the purpose of adding a new ordinance for the green. And maybe someone can address that. And plus, if there was, you know, I understand there was one, I heard one complaint, there was never a petition that was brought before us, that, you know, there were a lot of citizens that are really concerned about this. And that doesn't mean that we should, you know, ignore any person's concern. I'm just wondering, is there a need for an ordinance?
My personal opinion, yes. We, we've had other complaints. Part of the issue is us pulling complaints on drone complaints is, we can't put a header on every detail we make, whether it be a snake run or a drone run or whatever. So a lot of times, things go under information. So we go back to pull that. But I could sit here and name situations where we have a resident that's flying his drone over another resident's swimming pool when the girls are out at the pool and things like that. And now, it's been, you know, distributed by the FBI and everybody else, that the, these drones are being used by people flying over property, you know, surveilled behind property and things like that. So I, I think that you should have something in place. There, there's no way for us to regulate it if somebody calls us up there.
But the current ordinance doesn't cover private use, use of a drone on private property.
At our meeting, though, the biggest concern of the Police Department is somebody using this as a criminal tool and those kind of things. When you have somebody flying it over somebody's swimming pool, obviously, you're disagreeing, you're shaking your head, but.
This ordinance, this ordinance does not cover that.
Correct. But I'm telling you, the concerns of the Police Department are this. I'm not saying it's in the ordinance. You want to know what the concerns are. This is concerns of the Police Department. You, you know, you vote on how you want to vote.
Can I just comment on, on a couple of things? With respect to that, and the committee, it's the Public Buildings and Parks Committee, and the committee very specifically said, at this point, they wanted to address the issue at public buildings and parks. They recognized that the issue could be broader, and there was a belief that if, in fact, we wanted to go broader, that it would probably be most appropriate for the Law Committee to discuss that. And that's when the committee did, had previously heard about what was going on with the FAA, et cetera. So I know, as far as the Public Buildings and Parks Committee, there was some feeling that maybe the Law Committee should pick this up at a, at a later date.
Yes, thank you.
But they wanted to get additional clarity of what was going to, coming from the, the FAA. The other comment I would make is, with respect to, there only being one comment or, or whatever, my personal opinion is, this is a good case of actually being proactive as opposed to react. And what the committee very much found is that there was cases where best practice had, had been established in other parks and other communities, and they very much focused on the best practice and did not want to be in it, find themselves in a situation where we went a year down the road, and now all of a sudden, we've had someone injured, or we have a lot more complaints, and we haven't addressed it. I think that would have been irresponsible, having identified best practice. So I actually commend the committee for at least discussing this.
Natalie, last comment.
Okay. First, I want to preface this by saying that I am neither for drones or against drones. I don't have a drone, and I've seen them on very rare occasions. But I do know that they are new technology, that there are, you can buy a drone on, at Costco, you can drive, buy a drone at Target, you can buy one on Amazon for as little as $40 that weighs a pound, less than a pound, to highly professional drones that are much heavier and can cost over $1,000. And people that use them think they're fun. I, and I, they probably are a lot of fun. You put a camera on the top and, or they come with a camera, and the photos are amazing. And I want to remind council that when we held land use committee, land development committees, at least one, if not more than one, of our presenters included drone photography in their slideshows. And this ordinance would have made that completely illegal. There's no distinction in this ordinance between personal-use drones or professional-use. There is no, no distinction between model airplanes, which, as far as I know, have never been an issue at Amberly Green, and anything else. Drones or rocket launchers would drones or rocket launchers, which we have had the, let me, let me finish please, the father, daughter, Girl Scout rocket launch event, we give permission to at Amberly Green, that would be banned as well. And the ordinance itself, i- in my opinion, it is, it is predicated on citizen complaints, and, and it says we've had a lot of complaints. Now, I have asked for records of those complaints, and all I have found so far is that there has been one person that complained, I don't even know if it was officially to Village Hall, but he did write a facetious comment on next door, and all of a sudden, I mean, I've never seen us act so fast on anything, and, and I would add that that resident was here and was very interested in the pipeline, but apparently is not interested enough in drones to stick around to see his complaint become a law. Um, that doesn't preclude us from passing a law, but, I mean, in terms of complaints, if that, yeah, well, I won't even, I won't even get into all the complaints I've heard on lack of sidewalks, hundreds, but, um, anyway, this, regarding private, regarding private, private, privacy issues, I very specifically brought up the privacy issue as being my main concern of the use of drones, privacy for exactly the reasons the chief stated, photographing people in their private homes, doing private things. And I specifically said, this is not what we should be do, focusing on, if we're gonna focus on drones, let's focus on the real issue at hand by the law committee or the planning commission. And, you know, so maybe that would happen, and maybe not, but I don't think that we should wait for the FAA to decide on one and not for, on the other. I just, I think this is premature, this is, to me, this is a solution, and we're searching for a problem. That's all I have to say, thanks.
I'm tired of talking about drones. Um, I think we could consider an amendment to allow exceptions by the village manager's, um, decision to grant permission for people to do things. Um, I think the issue is just very broad, and we are keep, trying to keep, we keep adding in these other things, but it's really about not having people flying things around at two properties in the village. And some of them can be quite heavy, and there's a lack of regulation around this area, and other parks have done the same thing, I, that, that's, that's kinda my take on it. So, um, do I need to propose a specific amendment, or do you wanna say something?
I, I think that your point is extremely well taken, and I, I'm guessing that that's what the committee, again, I wasn't there, and I'm sorry about that, that, that's what the committee said, I think that's fair, um, and, you know, we can agree with that or not, whether it's needed or premature or whatever at the green, and, you know, I have different thoughts on that, but I think that's fair, I, I don't, I just don't think that's what the ordinance says. I, I don't, I think it includes way broader, way, way more than just the two properties, I think it reads way broader than that, and I think it's capturing, I wanna give the police every tool in their power to do everything they need to do, I think that's hugely important, but it's kinda like kids flying toy airplanes, like, okay, we're not gonna enforce it, but it says it.
No, grownups do the, the, they're, they're grownup toys too.
They're, they're, I think if drones, and I don't wanna limit it, I don't wanna get into, read, you know, redraft this, but, um, I just, I think the spirit of what you're saying is right, including the amendment to allow this village manager to make exceptions so that they don't have to come back to council, I think all of that's right, I, I just don't read the language as necessarily saying that.
I mean, the one thing, uh, having attended the committee meetings, um, it was not just two properties, it was three properties that were focused on, and the committee was very clear, as the, their intent was the three properties, which are this property, the Amberly Green, and the north side, as being public properties.
Thank you, um, just thought I'd ask the police chief a question, um, part of this ordinance includes this property here, and there was mention made that there, there could be issues with drones flying around here in terms of possibly interfering with electronic, you know, communications and things like that, so that's, that is correct. Is that right?
That's correct. And then we have our radio tower, French Park, it, like I said in the meetings before, I told you what our issues would be on police aspect, it, I, to me, it doesn't matter whether you pass this or don't pass it, if it becomes a safety issue for somebody flying it up the nor, up to AG, because there's a lot of people around, we're gonna tell them to stop flying it. If they're flying it over residential area, or we feel, feel they're using it as a burglar tool, we're gonna, you know, deal with that. So, the, I'm just saying, and when you do the ordinance, think about all aspects of it, of, you know, what we're gonna do with it, we're, I mean, and as for the, you know, we had had the rocket launch thing like three or four times up there, um, and it, I think it was a Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or something, but they've done it numerous times, but we, we do, we do take discretion, a lot of things we do. We have, we say that people are required to have parking permits up there on a regular basis, but if a resident had a, a party a couple doors away, we didn't make everybody come in here because they violated the ordinance that you passed. Well, I made the decision to say, the X amount of cars, I restricted area they could park in, or I can make everybody come down here and register a car because of that, I mean, so we're gonna use discretion, whether it be parking or drones or whatever, whatever it is. The goal was not to, you know, go out and arrest somebody and, you know, make somebody look stupid either.
Well, I, I, I understand that, I, I just think this ordinance, I mean, this ordinance flat out makes it illegal for the Girl Scouts to do rocket launchers, and I don't think we wanna get into this situation where we have.
Are they operating from remotes? Are their rockets operated from remotes?
No, this includes.
Well, capable of sustained flight, are they capable of sustained flight, or are these school projects to get launched and go a hundred and feet? That's not, that's not disallowed, Natalie.
These rock, these rockets can go a thousand feet in the air.
From the girls who make them?
You can purchase them at Walmart.
No, they, it's part of a project.
If they use accelerants, if they use the fireworks, or if they use the water devices to do, I mean, I, I guarantee you give this to any attorney, and every attorney's gonna read it differently, as we're seeing right now. You can read, you know, and every policeman's gonna.
Would, would, I don't know if this is a, if I, if I just, I don't know if this is appropriate, if, if, if the committee would reconsider.
Ordinance before us right now, so we can't, I mean, that's an option, maybe, but I think Tom has an.
What is, what is on the, the floor at this point is a motion to approve ordinance 2016 dash 10 as amended, um, and I would propose one other amendment, and that is under section 131 dash 44, I would add a letter B under A, and that letter B would read, the village manager is given the authority to grant, um, privilege, um, to people to use drones on public properties at his discretion.
Makes sense.
I, that's, that's my motion.
Is it a word for like?
Model aircraft. Could it, could it be the, the city manager or his designee? Because you're, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be on a weekend or something, and we're not calling the manager at home, and typically, it's something.
Village manager or his designee.
Then that way, he can authorize a police, somebody in the police department to do it for him.
So that, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded, that we modify ordinance 2016 dash 10 to add a letter B under section 131 dash 44, which would provide the village manager or his designee is given the authority to grant, um, privilege to someone to, to fly a model aircraft, um, as, as an exception to the, to the, the post. Any questions or comments on that?
No questions.
Yes?
I, I, well, my question is, can someone just succinctly explain to me why we want to prevent the use of any model aircraft on Amberly Green, where there has only been one complaint regarding the use of those drones on that property, and, and that citizen doesn't really appear interested in it anymore?
Okay, um, I mean.
I think it's rhetorical.
Yeah, it, that, that applies more towards the approval of the whole ordinance, but, you know, my con, as opposed to the, as opposed to the amendment, but I, I do come back to the comment that again, being proactive versus reactive, and I think in this case, it is a case of, what the committee found is that, in its study, yes, there was only one complaint, um, or maybe there were, I think the police said there were more, but, um, there, the police, the police basically, and the committee found that many, many other communities have addressed this, including the city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County, and have banned their use in public parks. So, the committee felt that that was best practice.
Well, that makes this whole, this cause really.
Okay, so, again, let's deal with the amendment first.
Amendment yet, have we?
It has been moved and seconded that we amend ordinance 2016 dash 10 as stated to add a section B. Please call the roll with respect to that.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
No.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
Okay, so now before us is the amended ordinance 2016 dash 10, um, I, I will entertain a motion to, for that particular.
I move that we adopt, uh, resol, or ordinance 2016 dash 10 as twice amended, so moved.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt amended ordinance 2016 dash 10, and it has been moved and seconded. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, please call the roll with respect to the approval of ordinance 2016 dash 10 as amended.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
No.
Natalie Wolfe?
No.
Okay, um.
It passes five to two. Um, I do just wanna quickly report, in addition, recently the committee met again and discussed the salt barn that the maintenance staff uses up at the north side to store the village salt. Uh, the building has been deteriorating for several years, and they have been in search of a cost-effective approach to its repair or replacement. Uh, estimates to this point have been upwards of two hundred and thirty-five to three hundred and twenty-five thousand for repair and replacement, replacement of course being more, but repair being significant as well. Um, through networking with other localities, that they were at a meeting with public works officials, and Wes Brown was interacting with people from Montgomery, and they had recently installed a new salt barn from a company called Brightspan that involves a concrete bot base with galvanized steel frame and a fabric cover, and worked with the engineer, but that, they pursued that and kept, brought to the committee some preliminary estimates. Uh, the approach, this approach, even with demolition, the cost was est, currently estimated a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, so it's still a lot of money, but significant savings. Um, this is just an FYI to let you know, this is the direction they're going in, uh, they will be bringing, doing a formal estimate process in the near, in the coming weeks, and so it'll be coming back to council, it'll be coming to council formally, they do hope to have it completed for the 2016, 17, um, snow season. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments?
Just wanna add one comment, um, it's Conway, I believe the amount, the estimate for the replacement is, would, would be less than if we had to repair the salt barn, 'cause it was considerable, there would be considerable repair costs, right?
Yes, the estimates to repair the existing building and the estimates to replace the existing building minimally were two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, ra, wide range, various, they looked at various kinds, and this is a total replacement and including demolition is significantly below that, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Uh, we'll now move on to the compensation and benefits committee.
Okay, the compensation and benefits committee met on, um, I believe it was the thirty-first of, um, May, to, um, take up the employee healthcare renewal, healthcare and dental renewal for the employees, um, and just as a reminder, the village is part of the local government benefit pool, um, which we joined in 2009, a sixteen-member consortium that allows us to get discounted pooled rates on, on our employee healthcare. Um, we met in that meeting with our representatives from Haran, uh, who walked us through what, what, what this year is gonna look like. Um, as a reminder, also, our plan, our, uh, plan year begins on August first, um, and the village continues to pay eighty-five percent, um, of the employee, um, healthcare cost, and I believe that's a hundred percent of the dental, so it's, yeah, um, so, uh, it's a fifteen percent contribution for employees. Um, we also have, as a reminder, an HSA, which we take up at a later meeting, so that doesn't include, this doesn't, this conversation doesn't include our HSA contributions, um, but that is also included as part of the employee benefit. Um, also, just as a reminder of history here, um, we had some steep renewal rates in the past, um, but there was no increase last year, so we, uh, that was nice, but, um, not so lucky this year, um, increase due to, you know, the market and also some, um, Affordable Healthcare Act changes, there was, um, a seven point eight percent increase on what is called the Platinum B Plan, which is sort of the base plan that the village, um, the village compensates at eighty-five percent of that plan, employees can choose to, uh, buy up, but that's, that's what we pay for, so seven point eight percent increase. Um, we were told by our representatives that that is, um, about right, that that's a national healthcare, um, trend for inflation is about eight percent, and it actually is going up to ten to twelve percent, so just for our own edification for planning for the years to come, and of course, like I mentioned, it renews on August first, so we won't have that all at one time, um, it's a, you know, prorated amount for our budget year. Um, and I believe that the total cost, if the healthcare, um, you know, the options that employees opt in for stays pretty similar, the total that that would, uh, be for us is somewhere around twenty, an additional twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars for us, that increase rate. Um, and then the dental went up a, a three percent as well, um, and, uh, both of, both of the, the recommendation to approve, um, both of those plans for this year, um, was unanimously, um, supported by the committee, so we have, um, a resolution 2016 dash twenty-five to renew the health and dental care for employees recommended by the committee. Uh, so I move that we adopt resolution 2016 dash twenty-five, renewing our healthcare.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2016 dash twenty-five, giving the village manager the authority to move forward with our health, health plan and dental plan renewed. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2016 dash twenty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And I assume that concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
And we'll now move on to the land development committee, and I just, uh, as the chair of that particular committee, I just wanna state that the committee's met twice since the last, um, council meeting, the first time to meet with, uh, representatives from the Hamilton County Planning Department to discuss a workshop that they held last summer to look at the Reading Road corridor, uh, from Section Road to Ronald Reagan, which, as we all know, that's a, a particular corridor, Reading Road, that has been under economic decline over the last fifteen to twenty years. Uh, what the Hamilton County Plan, and this is, a corridor that touches a number of other communities, including Cincinnati, Amberly doesn't specifically touch, but it has a significant impact on the village, it, Sycamore Township is. It, Sycamore Township is involved, et cetera. There's some ideas on ways to get that particular corridor reinvigorated and I think they're very encouraged with the potential that a redevelopment of the former Gibson site may have on that particular corridor. So, this was purely an informational session. I think our hope is that we then take it forward to the next step, which will be a joint meeting with Hamilton County Planning and the other municipalities and townships involved in the corridor to see if we can come up with some kind of plan. And obviously, it's going to be a big challenge, but whether there's some concrete steps we can make to reinvigorate that corridor. So that'll be something that I'll feedback over the, hopefully the next few months. The second meeting, we met to discuss the traffic study that was completed close to the north site. This traffic study, council approved going forward with this particular traffic study and we needed to do the traffic study to possibly sell the, or buy the three parcels of land that are currently owned by Hamilton County. Hamilton County wanted the traffic study done. What the study basically indicated was to anyone who drives by that corridor at certain times of the day, the traffic study basically confirmed what those people probably know is that that traffic is basically at capacity now and there really is very little room for additional capacity. There were some thoughts that came out of the meeting as far as things that we might do as far as having conversations with the Ohio Department of Transportation is, things that might be able to be done. Some thoughts on what we might be able to do with the city of Reading, who controls the traffic signals at that particular, those particular intersections. So we are still looking at ways that we could possibly increase capacity on that site, but it is going to be very challenging. But we are still continuing to look at, as I say, ways to increase capacity and we are still pursuing options for the north site, consistent with what council approved last year. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I think that we're probably, I've lost track of time a little bit, but probably the JCC is due for their update, like maybe after our next meeting, but sometime like, you know, in July, August. And it just, I wanted to just, it doesn't matter the date right now, I just wanted to encourage us, I think, in the interest of what we've been telling our constituents about being very transparent about that process and just given that sometimes our meeting notices go out very late, that maybe by our next meeting, we could have a date set for that, so we could announce it and be able to give people a little bit of heads up for that particular meeting, I think will be very, people will be very interested in that one, so, just a suggestion.
I will follow up with Mr. Fisher. Have you, have you talked to Mark?
Well. In regards to the traffic study?
No, with regards to the work, this dates back to the, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before where council basically gave the JCC 90 to 120 days to do the study. And so, just to get a status report on kind of how their work's going.
Yeah, I have had discussions with Mr. Fisher, primarily, he's obtaining information from the village in regards to their research, so it's primarily been from that perspective.
But we will follow up, just get an update and get some kind of idea when they might be at a point where they could provide us some feedback.
That's good, yeah, I mean, I think the point is simply on those particular meetings, if we could have a little bit more notice, because I think those in particular, we've just, you know, wanted to be very transparent about, so just give our constituents as much notice as possible for those meetings. So it doesn't matter when it is, but just, you know, more than the 24, 48 hours that we usually give.
Are you thinking, any other questions or comments? If not, we will move on to the managers' report.
I want to mention three items from the managers' report, the first item being the former Gibson building. Staff continues to work with the Port Authority, which took possession of the building today. The closing was held and so the Port Authority has completed their due diligence, so now they are the owners of the building at 21 Section Road, 2100 Section Road. Part of the Port Authority's plans is to acquire the property and to rezone the parcel that is about eight acres that would be on the southern end of the property that butts up against Section Road as well as Elbrook. And the intent is for them to request rezoning on that property to match the building, which is currently industrial A. That property that is the approximate eight acres is currently zoned residential B, so they will be coming in with a request this month for that to be rezoned. That will be referred to council, that'll come to council at your July, July 11th council meeting and then you'll be asked to refer that to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing most likely at the August Planning Commission meeting. So that's something that is in the works currently. There's also a couple of other things going on, there's a stormwater plan that is being developed by the port for this particular property. And about the mid, middle part of the property where the parking lot is located, there's some significant stormwater that traverses that property. Part of the objective of the Port Authority to acquire the entire 54 acres is to make it one entire site and currently, that stormwater pipe pretty much bisects the property. And so it is the Port Authority's interest to try to make it a complete 54-acre tract so it can be marketed as such, instead of in two different tracts of land as it currently, actually three tracts of land as it currently is now. There's also a paper street that is recorded on the property and so that will require some type of action to vacate that paper street. And then in addition to that, the demolition of the building will begin to become part of the plans. The plan is to demolish the entire building. We've had recent walkthroughs with the, with the building and identifying the, what's going to be necessary. They're not in the preparation plans yet for the demolition, but once the building is secured, which it is right now, and they move forward with some of the stormwater plans, they'll move forward with the demolition plans. We do understand that there is a, there was a full asbestos survey that was conducted on the property. That was prior to the port acquiring the property. And they recognize that there is asbestos there and the responsibility will be upon them and their demolition contractor to appropriately deal with that particular issue. So they've assured the village that they will conform to all regulatory processes and requirements during the demolition as well as the abatement of the asbestos and remediation. So that, there's a lot of activity occurring with the former Gibson building and the village is excited to be a part of that and to see what that site is going to bring to the village. Next item I wanted to mention is the teamwork that was exhibited this past month. You don't often think of incidents occurring over in French Park, but we did have a lady who was hiking in French Park who ended up breaking, breaking a bone. She had a fall and our police department and the maintenance personnel responded with our gator and they were able to hand carry the resident out with the assistance from the Deer Park Service and Fire Department. And so it was a great assist from our fire department as well as the neighboring fire department to serve that particular property within the village. So just some interesting pictures that were shared among staff about how that occurred and it's just, I'm assurance, some assurance on everybody's part that the fire department responds to all types of situations, even something like that. And the last time I wanted to mention was in regards to the two public information meetings that were held on Thursday, June the 2nd. Those meetings were recorded by ESP, who currently records our council meetings, and we have posted those recordings of both the afternoon as well as the evening session on our website. It was also released through social media. But for residents who did not have an opportunity to attend one of those meetings, they are able to go to our website, they can click on the council meetings and they'll find the two presentations posted on our website and they can view what was presented to the residents. And that concludes my report.
Are there questions for the manager?
At the June 2nd meeting, I remember that particularly in the evening session, there were quite a few questions and concerns expressed by residents of the Elbrook area about what's going to happen at the Gibson, former Gibson property. And I guess I just wanted to reiterate, I think it's been said before, but, or include as part of your tasks or maybe there's a role for council to play, I don't know, in providing information and reassurance and listening to concerns from the people who live down there. I think there's a lot of understandable anxiety about what's going to happen to this place that's been the same way for many years. And more information usually helps people feel less anxious, so just keep that in mind, I guess, is all I'm saying.
That is a staff assignment, so we're familiar with that, yes.
Well, reiterate Peg's point about Elbrook and then also, I have a question regarding our compost facility and in the past, we had leaf mulch. And now I read that we have leaf compost and I haven't seen the leaf mulch. Is there a reason for the change and have we changed?
We are required by the regulatory agency to dispose of the leaf pile that's on the site. We can keep it for a certain amount of time, but we are required to turn it over. So what we have up there now is we have a leaf pile, but it is not composted. So it's not as of much value to residents as a pile that is basically composted for three, two or three years. So we are limited on what we can provide from that perspective, because it's not the quality that most residents want.
Right, and, but maybe my question is for Tom as part of the community garden. Did we used to get the leaf piles?
What, I mean, formerly, because there wasn't as much demand for the leaf mulch or that became compost, the garden had really, was one of the few people that actually was requesting. And in fact, for a while, in order to comply with the rules, the village had to also have other parties come in and take some of it off. Now that some residents became aware of the good compost that came off the site, last year there was a lot of request for it, so the amount of leaf compost available was greatly diminished. Now, the village did keep the very end a while was available, available for the gardeners, so the gardeners did get a couple deliveries earlier this year of the leaf compost. And I believe there's still a little bit left, but what is the main part that is still left up there is, as the manager described, is a leaf pile that needs to age a while to the point where it gets back to leaf compost.
Okay. Too much of a good thing.
Sorry to reiterate the point again, but I certainly agree with, on the Gibson piece. And I think, I'm sure Land Development Committee will be meeting on, you know, frequently. But, I mean, also the Public Outreach Committee could certainly, it's obviously up to the chair, but that's a good, might be a good opportunity to call the Public Outreach Committee especially. And I think there are opportunities here, I think everybody in the village is going to be watching this very carefully and is very interested to see what's going to happen if that property was left here from the Port Authority, but as Peg mentioned, I think there really just is, there clearly are specific concerns from the residents on Elbrook. And also just maybe jumping the gun here a little bit, but since the manager mentioned it first, just wanted to thank you for, all three of you, for the June 2nd meeting. It was, I was only able to attend in the evening, but it was really great and very informative and very successful, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? If not, we will move on to the chief's report.
Okay, I'll point out, since you guys were talking about that meeting, looking at the site, the village site, the one meeting's already had 57 views and the other one had 36 views on the app, so that's a good thing, so thanks to the manager. I had a lot of residents mention to me that they were really happy that it was put on there and I did meet with numerous residents on Elbrook concerning the safety and the concerns as well as the pedestrian safety and that's been a topic that we've been dealing with. And the last meeting we had on pedestrian safety, we discussed the possibility of a sidewalk on the property and we have some, in an area that we felt was not safe for walking. So right now, we're kind of in limbo watching that and then at our next meeting, we're going to be talking about that again. It's coming up, all right? We, not yet? But the last meeting, we brought that up and said we'll discuss it again in the future once we see what the status of the property is. The, just a couple of things on the fire department, we have our new SCBA's. We've done our in-house training as well as hands-on in classroom, they're in service and seem to be functioning well. Obviously, we're in this time of year where we start getting an increase in car break-ins. I got some calls that we, part of the problem is we aren't notified by residents when the cars break in because they steal change and they find out a couple of days later and they don't tell us. But, you know, we really want people to notify us, whether you want to report or don't want to report. If you can let us know, it helps us track different areas that they're hitting at the time. We, I know they hit Kincaid within the past couple of weeks, so if we can just keep an eye on it. I know Reading and a few other communities have been getting hit hard as well. And a lot of these are, the majority of them are cars that are left unlocked with items in the cars. The, obviously with the increase that we talked about, the increase in drug arrests and the surrounding communities, what's coming into the village. We now have been carrying, officers have been trained in carrying Narcan on them. We haven't had a situation where you've used it. We've had several overdoses in the lot of the Jewish center, probably about three there. I don't know if it's just convenience to pull off the highway or why they picked that, but they picked there. We've had a couple in French Park and we've had one in a residence. So we're being exposed to it more now than we have been. We've seen it all over in Cincinnati and all these other communities get hit hard, or not, but something to keep in mind that it's, you know, it's around us and we just got to keep our eyes and ears open. And again, we just continue to stress to the residents, if you see something, call it in. I don't, if it turns out to be nothing, we don't, we'd rather come and find out it's nothing or find out if you see a suspicious vehicle that it's a neighbor or somebody visiting than to find out something was broken in later. That's it.
Are there any questions for the chief? If not, we will move on to the mayor's report and the first item I wanted to report on was, before you tonight is ordinance 2016-11. And what tonight will be is the first reading with respect to this particular ordinance. And what this ordinance does, it basically, it amends our sections of the code dealing with the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The Environmental Stewardship Committee went through the existing code and the Environmental Stewardship Committee, as we call it now, was formed in 2004 and at that point, it was called the Beautification Committee. And under our code, it is still called the Beautification Committee. So the one thing that this particular ordinance does is changes the code to rename it. What it also does is the, when the Beautification Committee was formed back in 2004, it was very focused on achieving Tree City USA and doing a couple very specific things. What the Environmental Stewardship Committee has been doing over the past few years is really broader than that. And so what we've done is tried to come up with some language that is more consistent with what the committee has been dealing with over the last few years and hopefully the language is broad enough to provide for flexibility as the committee does its role, which we definitely feel has been a very useful role. It also, the current ordinance, or the current code provides for nine members of the committee. And what we have found is that that is kind of restrictive and there may be times where you don't need nine members to do all the work that the committee's doing and you may not have passion amongst enough residents to have nine members. So what we proposed is that to provide some flexibility, a minimum of seven members and a maximum up to 12. The other thing that the proposed ordinance does is, the one thing we have found is something like the Environmental Stewardship Committee, which is an advisory body to this particular council that doesn't really have decision-making, but it, all the things that it's dealing with impact upon not only residents, but our neighboring communities. And in fact, we've had cases, right now, we have a case where we have a couple of residents of a neighboring community who have been very active- of residents of a neighboring community who have been very active and very instrumental in the work of the committee. So what we have proposed is that we allow for up to two non-residents, as long as they are residents of a bordering community, to serve on the committee. And then finally, with respect to the membership, it, it provides, our current, the current code provides that one of the committee members must be a employee of the maintenance department. And that, again, has served us well, but what we have found over time is that, that particular member of the maintenance department really has not been able to attend committee meetings, because the committee meetings tend to be held at seven o'clock in the evening. And if that committee, if that employee would attend, we would be paying them overtime. And so the person has not attended. So what we've, we've provided for in this revised ordinance is that the, the, there will still be a member of the maintenance department, but rather than being a member of the committee, they will basically be a direct interface and a name representative for the chair of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, as well as the council rep, to meet with that person periodically, to give it, give input from the committee, as well as it, get a better understanding of what's going on with respect to our gardens and the community and things like that. So that, that is what the proposed ordinance will do. As I say, this is the first reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven. My intention will be to have the second reading at the next meeting, and I, I may consider making a motion at that time to waive the, the third. So are there any, before I go on to anything else, are there any questions with respect to that? Next on the, also on the Environmental Stewardship Committee, at the last meeting, one of the big topics was the Duke Energy Pipeline. The committee reviewed a letter that was proposed for the committee to sign, and in fact, approved that letter. And the chair of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, Mary Stolpats, has submitted that letter to the deciding board. And then the last item with respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee is that our next meeting will be July twenty-fifth, but also this Thursday, we will also be having the first session of our tree maintenance, green maintenance. We, we've had groups of volunteers that have been going to Amberly Green to do some minor maintenance on the trees, to hopefully preserve some of our mature trees in the area. And that, that group will be meeting in the parking lot at Amberly Green at six-thirty on Thursday night. And that's really all I, I mean, it's been a long meeting, so that's all I really want to report on from the, the mayor's report tonight. Any questions or comments? We will now move on to new business. Is there any new business?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, PRM, our neighborhood school, PRM is currently looking for more volunteers who would be willing to donate a small amount of time this upcoming school year to help provide necessary enrichment to their students. As an invested community member, this is an excellent opportunity to be involved in your neighborhood school, this is Amberly's neighborhood school, to invest in, in our community's future and to demonstrate the generous spirit of the Pleasant Ridge community. And as an aside, I will add that I volunteered at PRM as a tutor, and it is a great school, and anyone who has the time really should take the opportunity to do it, to get to know their students, their staff, and what goes on at that school. Thank you.
So Natalie, we, you read my mind, that was one of the, I have, I have two other things in addition to that, but actually, I wanted to make a comment about Pleasant Ridge, one story too. As you, as, you know, this is definitely something, I think it's good for all of us to, to, even though by, by numbers, it's far from the largest school for our village, but celebrating their wins is good for us, it's good for all of us in the village, it's our property values, it's, it's, you know, it's, this is our neighborhood school. So I wanted to actually make a comment that they had won, the State Board of Education awarded PRM this year one of its, this is the first annual Momentum Awards, which recognizes schools that received As on every value-added measure on the school, state report cards. So, and what it means is that it's a small, elite group of schools from the, not the fourteen, fifteen school year that showed that students received a year's worth of academic growth in, in both reading and math. So it's, it's a high honor, it's a good academic indicator for that school. It's good for us, I mean, for the most part, overall, good for, good for our community to have that good school. The other thing I wanted to mention, actually, I want to embarrass the mayor for just a second and thank, thank the mayor. I, I, last weekend was in Washington DC at the American Jewish Committee's Global Forum, and the day that we were there on Monday, there was a full-page advertisement spread in the Wall Street Journal with Mayor Muthain's name in it. And it was, it's a really wonderful thing. So American Jewish Committee, JCC, nationally, internationally, ran a program called Mayors United Against Antisemitism, and asked mayors from all over the world, started in the US and now in Europe, to sign on to basically a pledge that says, you know, that rejecting antisemitism in, in the communities. And it's certainly very meaningful in a lot of these places, extremely meaningful in a community like ours with such a high Jewish population. And, and the mayor joins very, very good company, and some of the, some of the, you know, mayors of the biggest cities in the country, and, and here in Ohio, John Cranley signed on and several others. But there it is, Tom, Tom Muthain right there, so I, I brought this for him, but there it is. It was a, you know, two-page spread in the Wall Street Journal, so it was very, thank you very much for signing this and for, for doing it.
I mean, I did, I read that particular item, I think it was probably last July or August council meeting. And as I said at the time, when I read this particular thing, I mean, I'd almost have to be pretty dense not to be supporting the thing, be it Amberly Village or anything. It was a very well-written item, and I'm very happy to be on it. If I had any idea that I would, would be featured in the Wall Street Journal, it would make it even easier. So, thank you. Are there, is there anything else? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.